All right, we're gonna go ahead and start our meeting. First, we're gonna ask Pastor Apollo Roy, will you please come up against our prayer? And Council McCoon to give us our pledge. And we're gonna ask everyone to please stand.
Good evening, thank God for this opportunity. Let us pray. God, we just thank you, God. We thank you for another evening you blessed us to see, God. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your love. We thank you for being a good father, God. You love us, God. You care about us. We thank you for the city of West Memphis, God. We thank you for our city, God. We thank you. Have you have prospered us. Have you have blessed us, God. We thank you for the big businesses that are already here. I'll comment to West Memphis, Arkansas. We just thank you for favoring us. And God, we just thank you for just being a faithful God. We just pray, God, for peace in this city, God. We pray, God, for prosperity in this city, God. We pray for your protection, God. We pray for exceedingly abundantly blessings for us. We pray for peace in our city, God. Protection against crime, God. Protection, protect us against diseases, sicknesses, God. Protect us, God, from all matter of hurt, harm, and danger, God. Keep us in your care, God. We even thank you, God, for this city, God. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for this ten city councilmen and women, God. We just thank you, God. Continue to order our steps, God. Give us what to do, what not to do, God. Give us favor with you and man, God. And God, we just bless your name on tonight. We give you glory. God, we expecting you, God, to bless us with peace, protection, and prosperity. God, we are expecting great things from our great God. And God, we expecting mighty things from our mighty God. In Jesus' name, thank God. Amen.
Would you remain standing and face the flag for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every liberty and justice of all. Thank you, and you can be seated.
I don't call this meeting to a word. We're gonna ask our city clerk, will you please call the row?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior.
Here.
Councilor Crone.
Here.
Councilor Bruce. Councilor Katz. Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Holt. Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Mary.
Here.
We got seven out of nine present here today. So I'm gonna go ahead and start. The first thing, you know, I talked to you all about adding this to the agenda. This is where we cleaning out the bio to eliminate some of the water and flooding here in the city that we got to tax, pass, to work on the infrastructure. And we didn't get the bid tabulations here on time, but we do have. Do everyone have this copy right here? Ms. Patricia, did you give everyone the copy of this right here? And we see there's a great difference between the bid and what they're going to do. If they're gonna start cleaning out and widening Dish 12. With that ditch is right now, that's from Earl Perro, Acosta Boulevard, to Avalon. You know, we had all the stream flooding with the foreign police and parks and utility everyone was working to alleviate a lot of flooding from their place so they'd have enough enough area so the water can drain out. So that's the first part. And then the second part would be from the, it's going to be from the OK South, Eastwood area, all the way up to Walker, where we start to alleviate some of that water. So you know, back from the east end of town, War 5 Y area, that's where we starting at. And we have to start from the, from that area because the water have to be relieved. Can't start from there because someone will continue to block it in the front. So can I get you all to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
On paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, just added. Any other company? Okay. Can I get a motion second to approve the bids?
So moved.
Second.
On paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is passing approval. Pacific is good. All right. Were there any corrections to the minutes?
So none.
Is the motion a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. We go down to our first item of business. Uh, we have our old business, City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor. It's the second reading of O2, an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 1600 East Broadway Avenue, permitting a car dealership in a downtown mixed-use two zone, DTMU dash two.
All right. Haven't ever read for the second time, but I know Ms. Felix talked and the young gentleman that I think owns the dealership, they was here. And I was asking them, thinking they were asking to be here. So if the council, I guess, well, Ms. Felix, did you want to speak before this gentleman do with the council? If you all, I got a motion second for you all to approve and to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Was it already a car dealership there?
Uh, Car Mart was there, but I think the twist is that he owns the, the car dealership at the railroad track?
Yes, sir, Majestic Auto Sales.
Majestic.
Right next to the library.
Okay. So then we're here from both of you all.
So basically, what I want to remind you of, of planning commission's decision, and they are permitting this use with the condition that he will close the current car dealership. Reason being, currently, his car dealership is a legal non-conforming permitted use because that means he's grandfathered in under the old code. The new code prohibits car dealerships in the downtown mixed-use two zoning class. So adhering to our current code, we're trying to eliminate altogether car dealerships in this zoning class.
My name's Justin Smith. I'm the owner of Majestic Auto Sales. And my family has been in business here for twenty-five years now in West Memphis, providing used car dealers, I mean cars, to the people of West Memphis. We've currently outgrown the location we're at and are looking for a bigger dealership, which America's Car Mart was there before. We weren't looking to shut down this property because it's gonna be another just vacant building right next to the library. It's really specific on what it's zoned and what it can be in the future. I do understand completely about getting rid of, you know, some car dealerships on Broadway because they're not ran properly. They're not actually being used as car dealerships, and they're kind of being used as junkyards. But we're not using it for that. We're using it to provide a service to the people of West Memphis. And at the new location at 1600 Broadway, we were looking to carry a little bit higher-end vehicle, continue to do what we're doing at the current location, and then open up another one, but sell higher-end, like newer vehicles, offering, you know, different financing to the people of West Memphis.
So you're gonna have two dealerships, the one where you currently are, and then the one that you're proposing to open if council approves this special use permit?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Right now, that building has just been sitting there for a while, hasn't it?
Almost two years, I believe.
What was it named before? I forgot.
It was America's Car Mart.
America's Car Mart.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think it's been closed that long.
Is it not? Well, I think, I think the date was April or May, no, March of 2024. I guess that'd be, what, eighteen months? I'm sorry. I didn't know that, but it kind of slipped my mind a little bit. I'm just afraid that, you know, if we close down the current one where we're operating, you know, a business that's well-kept and we're providing the service, I'm scared that it's still gonna be, with the zoning being so specific, that that lot's gonna sit there, not sell, and just be another vacant building on Broadway in the downtown, you know, Main Street district.
Right. I know where you're located. You seem to keep that property up pretty good. I mean, I have no objections to this. That's not my area, but I have no objections to it. I don't know how anyone else feels.
Well, I feel like if you feel another way about it, why don't you just relocate to that place?
It's kind of hard when you own a building and have to pay a note on it, and then it's gonna sit, probably bank it, like a lot of the other buildings sitting right there, like Delta Ice and the Red Barn, and they're just sitting there empty and not being used. It's gonna, financially, we can't, you know, afford to not have it open to, you know, pay the loan on the building.
I understand what you're saying, but Broadway got enough car lots.
A lot of bad ones. You know, and I, I think that, I think they, you know, spoken before, there's a lot of ordinance and stuff in place, and as the mayor said that they were, you know, hiring another, you know, code enforcer, you know, to maybe, you know, be able to crack down on the people that aren't actually, you know, staying up to code and actually aren't like selling vehicles and providing a service to the city.
Yeah, we got quite a few of those not staying up to code.
Yes, ma'am, I agree a hundred percent. It looks bad, and I agree that it does not need to, you know, you know, continue to look that way because it does give a bad look. But we aren't, you know, we're actually selling cars and, you know, running a legit business.
Yeah, because we've been trying to clean up Broadway on that end.
Yes, ma'am, I know.
And we do have a mess down here.
Yeah, we do.
And it's a big property. I wouldn't be trying to, you know, purchase it and move down there and spend that, you know, have that type of investment and not, you know, keep it in tip-top shape, just like Carmar did for a lot of reason, you know, for all the years.
You could move a car lot down there and put a hamburger place where you are now. That would be nice.
That's about all it can be.
Mayor, we read this for the second time, so.
Yeah, just on the second time. It'd be in two weeks for the vote unless you all vote to suspend the rules or place on the third and final reading.
No, I would rather we wait to the next meeting so that we have time to think and ask questions and meet with Ms. Felix and all.
Okay, well, definitely. It was on the second reading, so in two weeks then, that's when you can come back and the council will make a decision on what way they want to go.
That's gonna be on October ninth?
It's gonna be on October ninth, yes.
Say that again, October the?
October ninth.
Ninth, okay.
It's twelve, it's gonna be at one o'clock about, yeah. It'll be at twelve thirty.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, City Attorney.
All right, this is second reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 5050 Commerce Street, permitting a towing and storage yard in a light industrial zone, R1.
Haven't ever read for a second time. We'll be back on the agenda again for the last and final reading, October ninth. Council?
Mayor, I was just gonna ask Ms. Felix if my memory serves me right, is this the company that had a supplemental to this request to pave a gravel road?
Yes. Well, not the road, the parking lot.
Okay.
And I went back and revisited it. So to get to the, the parking space, the towing yard, you have to use a gravel road to get to it, which that's gonna create more dust than him parking cars in the parking lot. I'm thinking this is not practical to require this.
Okay.
But it's up to you guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Mohammed, will you give me the pleasure? Is R1 and R2?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion that R1 and R2 be read by title only.
I get a second?
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. City Attorney?
R1 is a resolution to approve the sales agreements between the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and Tiffany Franklin, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreements and sign deeds on behalf of the West Memphis city.
All right. I actually had to do some research from what the last meeting you all had me to do. The city, the person don't own any grass-cutting leas or anything that we may have cut in the yards or anything like that. I have seen her plans for the first property that she's getting ready to construct, so. And Ms. Felix, can you just explain the difference between the trade, not the trade apart, but you know, the Broadway district in these properties?
So yes, these properties was listed on the properties that we listed for investors and developers. These were scattered sites for investors. The Broadway part were for developers only. So anybody could bid on these properties. It was based on first come, first served. There were no stipulations as far as a timeline to develop or anything. They were just for anyone that looking to invest in property.
And, and one of the things, I want to make sure that whoever got these properties was ready to build, not just get them and you just keep them. And she do have a plan that's in, that she's ready to build.
I've seen the plans myself.
Are we talking about single-family units?
Yes.
Basically, yes.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. Get a resolution number.
Resolution number 2331, 2331.
That number is 2331. Also, City Attorney, can you go down to R2?
Yes, R2 is a resolution authorizing and approving execution of an equipment lease purchase agreement with Cadence Equipment Finance, a division of Cadence Bank.
Also, I want to explain what that was. You know, you all voted for the sanitation department to have lease these vehicles, and the first vehicle has came up to where they need the leases up on it. So we have to either pay the balloon payment or go into, really go into a new contract that would allow us to get a new truck coming in. So we thought, and Sean is back there if you wanna make your way up in case, in case you may have a question for Sean. He's the one who does all the mechanics on the truck. It's over the mechanic shop. I think he kind of explained to you all why it's so important because if trucks go down, they have one back immediately through the lease program.
Sean, you wanna give us your opinion?
Well, prior to me taking over City Shop, a lot of the trucks were tore up, down. We had a lot of down trucks, downtime. Trash wasn't getting picked up the way it was supposed to because of down trucks, everything else. The lease program, I believe, is a good idea due to the fact of it keeps your equipment up and going and running instead of getting back in the same shape that we was in before where the vehicles were ten, twelve, fifteen, eighteen years old, and we were still trying to keep them up and going. I think the lease program keeps you up with new equipment, and it keeps us from having basically downtime of getting the trash and everything picked up the way that we have been here lately. I think we've been doing a pretty good job on that. I think the lease program is great. I mean, I, I believe there's other, I know it don't have anything to do with this, but I believe utilities is actually leasing bucket trucks now. So I mean, I think it's a good idea.
Because when you're leasing, if something breaks down, then that company is responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of everything.
Yes, ma'am, on the warranty side of it, if it's a, I guess you could say, a wear and tear item, we fix it. If it's on their side, then they, yes, ma'am, they come out and they fix it. You can get a, a deal to where they can come out and fix, you know, if anything goes wrong with it. But the way that we've been doing it is if it's a wear and tear, wear and tear item, we just order the parts and we fix it ourselves at the shop. And if it's something on their side, I call them, they come out and look at it, and then they fix it there on the site.
Will this, since we've already got one that we're using now as lease purchase?
Yes, sir.
Will we continue to use that same truck, or will we get a replacement?
No, so that truck, it gets turned back in.
Okay.
And then you'll, that, that truck goes back to them, and then we get an, actually another truck. And it just kind, it's kind, you know, like a rotation, this kind of thing. You know, it keeps, you know, I mean, I, I think it's a good idea on any department, any department in the city, you know, to, to, to look into leasing, to leasing vehicles. I mean, it's, it keeps your fleet up, and it keeps your fleet up to new standards and everything else coming up. Because I mean, a lot of this stuff's coming out. It's hard to get parts, I mean, the older stuff, it's hard to get parts for this stuff. And then when you do, you pay for it. So I mean, I think leasing's a good idea.
Were there any other questions for Sean, or any question that you all may have?
No, I think it's a good idea, Sean, to keep the burden off the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
I get a motion, the second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Will you get a resolution number?
Resolution number 2332, 2332.
That number is 2332. We had no permission request committed for our department? City of West Memphis Fire Commission Meeting was Tuesday, September the sixteenth. Called a joint, called the meeting to order at 2:20 PM, and we did not have a quorum, but we did have some discussions. We have, we had three vacancies on the EMS side, no retirements. We have ordered 12 sets of PPE turnout gear, and our ladder truck should be here by May of 26. Our building maintenance, Seventh Street Fire Department and the library, they're, it's a little bit over budget, so they're trying to, we did a tour yesterday, and we're trying to get it within budget, I'll make some decisions about that. EMS calls year-to-date, 2,842. Collection year-to-date, 2,243,336.13. Our updates, annual safety day will be October the eighteenth. We will honor this year's junior fireman Thursday, today, at this meeting, end of this meeting. We are selling tables for our firefighters' ball, which is November the 22nd. Firefighter standard graduation will be coming up soon. We will send invites out to all council members. Date is not confirmed at this time. Annual lieutenant and captain promotion testing will be conducted next month. Meeting was adjourned at 2:50, end of report. And also, just to let you all know, I, I did have a little hangup with some of the builders because I felt like for 2.2 million dollars, only thing you want to do is build just a bay when you won't get the men and women at the fire department doing. I just think that's crazy when I was supposed to see that, that we're able to build a whole complete new fire department for pretty much that same amount of money. So, so I'm kind of fine with that, so. I keep you all abreast on where we go from there in case we may, I may come back, come back and get some help from some other areas that you all learned about on the second. Airport?
The airport met this morning at 8:00 AM, and the notice of award had been sent out to Rebel Services for the avgas rehab project and to the S&amp;N contractors for Phase Two of the North Apron Rehab Project. Phase One, which, of the North Apron project, is complete, and the closeout documents are being prepared. And that concludes the airport report.
That completes?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. At this time, we're gonna call Chief Ely or Inspector Lee? Okay. That'll come forward for the presentation of the junior firefighters.
Good evening. I'm Fire Chief Barry Ely, for those who don't know me. Today, we are recognizing and honoring our junior firefighters who have completed the 2025 class. When I first took over as the fire chief, one of the things that I was tasked with by our, by Mayor McClendon was to try to expose our youth to a possible career in the fire service. Since then, we got together with my staff, and we came up with some creative and innovative ideas on how we could expose our youth. We really want to try to create ways to retain and recruit these young people. And since then, the program has really, really done well. It was led by Inspector Walker. He's done a magnificent job with the program. We've hired several of our youth from our inner city. Now it has turned into brick and mortar. It's gone from a junior firefighter program to, we've implemented a high school program in a curriculum. So now we're going after them in the junior high schools so that when they get to high school, they'll be familiar with what we do, and they could possibly get a career, a career in the fire science. So we're just excited about that. And at this time, I want to turn everything over to Inspector Walker so he can do the presentations.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Excuse me. We turn it, I know the people. Yeah. Yeah, that's good, sort of like that.
That's the one, too. So like Chief said, I'm Inspector Walker with the West Memphis Fire Department. One of the things that I think Chief kind of saw me early on, one, I do have quite a few children, so I like dealing with kids, and I like dealing with the younger generation. As I was instilled, I want to instill things into them as well. So it was kind of a no-brainer to take over the responsibility to cultivate this program. What I'd like to just kind of give a brief overview of what we do, we basically teach them what we call the firefighter one curriculum, and that's basically tools, understanding the operations of a fire department, the different, the different hierarchies, the different responsibilities that we carry, and so forth. And one of the things that I really like doing, if you look at the screen and kind of see, there'll be a couple of videos, is just showing them those practical things. That's something that we didn't get to do a lot of that first year, but this year we really honed in on getting their hands on the things that we actually get to use in and out throughout the service. I'd like to thank Instructor Sears for stepping in and helping me more this year. It really helped out a lot to get some things established. These students were also able to get certified in CPR and stop-the-bleed training. This is something that looks great on a resume, and they didn't have to pay for anything. It was sponsored by our partners at the Boys and Girls Club, Darren McCollum is somebody that I'd like to thank as well for helping facilitate this program. And they acquire job skills, job readiness skills. So it's not about, I talk to them all the time about, you know, even if you don't want to be a firefighter, the thing is to learn how to show up on time, learn how to communicate when you're not going to be there, learn how to, when you get there, give it your all. And these things go a long way. And I'm very impressed with the kids that we, the group of kids, we had this, this go-around. They were very engaged. It was hard to get them there sometimes, but when they were there, they were full-on, they didn't hold back, and most of them did shy away from any challenges that we threw at them. So with that said, I'd like to go ahead and begin presenting the awards. A lot of our students this year are very active. They, some of them are still in high school, so I know ones that choir practice, ones that it works. So I'm gonna call the people who are not here first and just recognize them. I have Mason Faulkner, Jaden Cross, D'Amico Hall, and Chris Meeks. And as I call you, as I call your name, please come up here and receive your certificate. Should Darius Jones? Chauncey Brown. And last but not least, Memorial Mabon. And last but not least, last but not least, Memorial Maven. Which I would like to add, she will take the title of our Junior Firefighter of the Year this year.
Excuse me, Inspector, would you, uh, you and Chief and, and all of the recipients, would you all come back here for, we get a group picture?
Yes, sir. Could she say a few words?
Sure, sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Memorial Maven and I was in the junior firefighter and I just wanna say thank you to the fire department for letting us be here and then us learn things today and those six months. You treated us like family and it meant a lot to every single one of us and it taught us a lot of lessons and responsibilities in the fire department and in life. So it means a lot to us junior firefighters that you gave us this opportunity to be in your station and your little home also. So thank you again for letting us be there all together.
Y'all come on right here. Is, is your mom crying back there? Oh. All, all the recipients, yeah, they. We always commend the job that Chief Ely and his entire staff is doing with helping with our youth as well as our youth as our preacher. So once again, congratulations and thank all of you all. Um, I got a pre-announcement. Also, Fire Safety Day is October eighteenth. Chief?
Yes, sir.
October eighteenth, right? Fire Safety Day is October eighteenth. Uh, so everyone keep that on their calendars. Also, the, uh, West Memphis clean boots on the ground that the sanitation will be doing, make sure our whole city is clean, is gonna be on October the twentieth. We get students from the high schools, all the paternities, churches, uh, sanitation department, just everyone, we gonna, we gonna clean this city up. Our code enforcement's gonna be our everyone, so it's gonna be good. So we asking anyone here in the city that wanna join to be a part of it, just come back. We gonna make sure that we take care of different parts of our city and we gonna make a big deal. We even got the dumpsters that'll be here that week as well, so anyone that's cleaning up their own home, just come out and dump everything they need in the dumpster, so definitely keep that in mind. Also, our City Council, I guess I get a motion, the second to change our City Council meeting to October the ninth for the first one and October the twenty-third for the second one?
So moved.
On paper, aye? Opposed? All right. Also, October second, I'm asking that all of you, my City Council, would you all please join me? Please make the time, October the second, at twelve o'clock. They meet me at the, uh, the groundbreaking for Google if they come into West Memphis officially and you all gonna learn some very, I'm gonna say this, if we got the second lowest utilities in the state right now, can you imagine if, if they just came and just say hypothetically, drop five million dollars on everybody, lights, what, what you think it'd be able to be? Y'all think that's possible? If you live in West Memphis, get ready to see it. So, I mean, these are some of the things that you, you're gonna see, so that's gonna be amazing. So October the second, City Council, you all, please come out, be a part of it, uh, and see what's going on. Also, location is going to be right behind Coca-Cola, behind in that area which is the, uh, yeah, right in the row, yeah.
And what time, Mayor?
It's gonna be at twelve o'clock. And the governor will be here as well and everyone, uh, Google officials will be here. Also, October Tuesday, October the se- second, seventh, October the seventh, Tuesday, we will have a national night's out. So we'd like for all of you all to be a part. Uh, Councilwoman Harris, you cooking?
No.
You ain't cooking? Councilman Monday, you ain't barbecueing?
No.
I need, I need some beach gobler.
They already woke me up.
Hell, no.
With the city cooking and then the seniors cooking today.
We cooked today, you.
Yeah.
Senior citizen dinner.
Well, Ms. Mohammed, you cooking? Ms. Mohammed, you cooking?
I'm cooking.
Lamb?
I do cook lamb, but I won't be telling you that now.
Councilman McCool, you, uh, you, you cooking?
I, I'm going to a national night out.
All right, all right, that work, that work. Well, you all come out and be a part, they give us an opportunity for you all to meet everyone in the city as le- as well as elected officials to just come out and, and pick, uh, I think the Director Bow, she has the. Okay, yes, right. October fourth, hold on, okay. You'll get an opportunity to meet your elected officials as well as, uh, the people for the city, be able to ask questions, be able to taste your food, make sure you got some good food like Ms. Harris to have over there, but that's a different story. I'm seeing I work on her a little bit, but definitely that gives an opportunity for you all getting to know your city. October the fourth, we're gonna have rhythm and ribs, once again, that's gonna be at our, it's Eugene Wood Civic Center, right in the parking lot. So everyone that think they can cook some, some ribs and steaks, you doing steaks, too?
Steaks and ancillary.
Steaks and ancillary, okay, so, hey, y'all come on out and get some good food. I mean, another chance to fellowship with the city and everyone get together on that, so that's gonna be great. Uh, also, you all know our police department did a press conference, uh, Monday and they just reassuring that, uh, they are gonna be effective in fighting crime hard and which I don't think, honestly, I'm, I'm hoping that there's nothing gonna come over this side, you know. A young man went on, uh, Facebook and said, if you had the West Memphis Police and the Arkansas State Police, you wouldn't have no problem. So I'm just gonna depend on that as well, but, um, we just gonna keep doing what we doing, asking not just our police department, but our communities, uh, our different, uh, churches, uh, the parents, that's the community, just to make sure we, you keep it on our kids and keep our community safe. At this point, you anyone else have any other announcements? Councilwoman Hudson? All right. We have two sister requests, uh, Mr. Nate Daniel Johnson is here.
You're doing good today.
Come on up, sir. And how you doing? I'd like you to introduce yourself, I just wanna tell you how the process normally work. Uh, we'll get the council heads your application, they all have it. And for the next two weeks, they'll scan over it, look into things and if Ms. Patricia doesn't find anything to give them, in two weeks, they will vote on it at that point. But you can go ahead, go ahead here and introduce yourself to the council.
My name is Nate Daniel Johnson. I was here once before, a few months ago, just opened up a new business, refined touch behavior health and recovery. And so now we're in the process of opening up a transportation service as well, which I was all trying to avoid, didn't wanna deal with the hassle of transportation, but we ran across a couple of issues with clients having issues getting back and forth. So I said, well, we gotta, we gotta resolve that issue. Long behold, now I'm standing here. But again, my name is Nate Johnson. Any question you have, I'm here to answer.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for him that you all need to ask? All right. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And also, when this council meeting is over, I want y'all to be, I just wanna introduce you all to a, a person that has really been helping us with a lot of transportation things here in the city of West Memphis, but they're gonna be at the council, not part of the council meeting. Also, now, Mr. Darius Erby, will you come up, please? We'll get, the council give you five minutes and just I'll give you your name, your address and you can address the council.
Hello, uh, my name is Darius Erby. Um, I lost, like I said, I lost my vision at the age of fourteen. Um, I've been, uh, looking for a job, you know, since I was basically eight, eighteen when I graduated from, uh, Arkansas School of Blind located in Little Rock, Arkansas. Um, but I am here really to, uh, really ask Mayor or, you know, for like any internship program that I can, cause I've been looking for a job and been getting turned down. I don't know, because maybe I'm low vision, but I am, I do have my associate in business, my bachelor's in business administration and my master's in communication studies.
All right.
And.
But I, I've really been trying to look for a job, you know, for a very long time and I've been getting turned down. Uh, I checked out banks and, uh, Fidelity in West Memphis, Arkansas, Regions, uh, even ASU Mid-South and, um, I've been getting turned down even, um, online, um, far as remote jobs and stuff like that, but I've been getting still turned down. So I just chose to come here, I think it was, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and I was trying to, um, see if Mayor or the city hall have any like internship programs that I can do, cause I'm really just trying to, you know, prove to, um, to y'all that I can hang with, you know, the sighted people as well. Um, I, I have, uh, skills in, uh, communic- uh, communication. Uh, I'm a fast learner, a, a good typer, a forty to sixty words per minute. Um, I'm real good in Microsoft, um, Office. I'm just trying to, you know, look for a job and basically hope that, you know, you give me a chance to prove myself that I can work in the workplace as well as sighted people.
Thank you, uh.
Do you think we'd have something in the financial department that perhaps we could be an intern? I don't know, what kind of salary are you looking for?
I'm just, I'm looking, uh, for something that I can start off with. It, it don't have to be like a high salary, I mean, I, I'm willing to work my way up, so.
And you'll have to have special equipment that you, uh, you, you see, but you're just not sighted real, real sighted.
I'm legally blind.
Legally blind.
Yes, ma'am, cause I can't see at all in my left eye, but my right eye, I can, it's real blurry, so it's like a real blurry, so that's why I use my cane to, so I won't just bump into anything like that.
So when you're typing, what do you use?
I'm using a screen reader known as Jaws. Also, um, you know, I know, uh, Br- uh, Braille as well, so.
Right. So I was thinking, do you have anything for him?
If he can talk that fast, we can probably use a typist, yes. But I'll tell you what, I'll put your contact and, uh, we'll put something in the paper.
All right, then.
Also, we reach out to the school, cause I'm sure it's a lot of children that may be dealing with those type of issues and see whether, if Dr. Force to have something. But we would look around here and, uh, you his sister, fiancee, okay, do you have a, do you have a resume or something where I can circulate through?
I have a resume.
Okay, okay, yeah, get, get, make sure you give me your resume and I get you a telephone line, Jevon Carr, who's our H.R. Director, and see what be the best way we can try to match something up, if, if we do have something here in the city. But I, I commend you, young man, as, uh, wanna not just feel sorry for yourself, but wanna make sure that you can make something happen for you, so congratulations.
All right, thanks.
So you say that's your fiancee?
Yes, ma'am.
You're not too blind, are you?
Ms. Mohammed, what you say, you ain't got to look for nothing?
Ain't done with that, go.
Well, young man, if you keep a prayer on your heart.
Thanks.
And keep God in your business, you won't have no problem.
Yes, ma'am.
Cause the more you seek Him, the more He gonna seek you.
I appreciate that.
You just stay focused and go right on, cause God gonna bless you because you honest.
Thanks.
I will, I definitely will.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, did any other council person have anything they wanna bring to the, uh, floor?
No, it's done.
I need you about two, two, just two minutes, I wanna introduce someone real quick, but, uh, if y'all good, might I get a motion, the second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? On paper, aye? Opposed? Let's go home, but I need y'all to hold, yes, per.